This is our great captain, late 2017. We welcome Charles Ross by standing in the chair.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to tell them about Castle and ready to go and take his time.
All right, God, let's most again, Lord, that we come. On this ground every now and then, I can't find my eyes close. Give you thanks for all your love and your kindness and your mercy that you have bestowed upon this county. And thank you, God, for what you have done in the past and what you get away with to do in the future. And I will ask that you bless the members, the citizens of this county in a special way, lest you remember this board in a special way, that wants to be united as much as possible. And retain every good which is seen on your side. In thy name, I give all of the praise. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Chair, skip the approval of the general. Skip the approval of the general.
The number four now, approval again of six twenty two sixteen. As far as a motion, it really doesn't matter.
Don't move it.
The motion approved this second.
Second.
On the favor of the House. The number four now, this is a public here. This is the Sheriff, Jay Grant, our Sheriff, he was here. He's like, he's almost, uh, just, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, if a minority have a public here first.
But you got a public here, he has anybody.
Mr. Chairman, Castle, the award this year from the Justice Assistant Grant is thirteen thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars. We will apply that towards purchase of control car. We'll have to add ten thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars to that, but that's what the monies will be used for.
You gotta keep my seat, brother, I see you sitting right here. Trying to get us more money than this year, less than the key.
That's right.
Any more, if we have to do anything there, I thought, thank you, Sheriff. The number six, nine, your business. The World Series, double eight, three teams. We're in Dillon County. One of the state, one of the World Series. And the beast, we're so proud of, we got two from Dillon, and we have one team of ours. They, the World Series, double eight, Dillon Dix, Angels, ten years, we all so much be recognized.
Thank you, Sheriff. Here you go. It's your question. Key drop the good word. Proud of you. You get that first when you get that after work. And these girls have also done a great job. Really good getting team, and we're proud of you for going to the World Series. And good luck to y'all, they'll win it all.
My girl don't hear.
I tell you what, he's up in Shorefield pretty, he's in all my pretty. Proud of you too, Dwayne. I understand you girls. You got a brilliant coach, and then he's got a brilliant brother turning here. Hey, good luck to y'all, they'll win it all.
Appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
I want to thank all of y'all coaches and players for coming, and if y'all want to be asked to, you guys will, we've got to say five little things.
This is true. I know they already have shifts in the end, but we need to vote on it.
Okay, okay. If they already got a check.
Thank you all. Thank you.
You have to do it one at a time, or all three. You can do all three, but I didn't hear what the motion was.
What was the motion? We need to check.
Ballwood.
All three teams.
Then Mallett.
We need the mountain.
Then we need the mountain.
Twenty-five hundred each.
Okay, I'll take a raise right hand. Okay, William, turn down now another six. Dean, approval of credit card, Anderson Brothers Bank.
I got the motion, Mr. Chairman. I want to apply with Anderson Brothers Bank. Mister Beatty, apply for twenty-five five hundred limit on credit card to Anderson Brothers Bank. Once it's received, do away with the First Citizen, where he can keep up with it.
Yes, Mr. Scott, Mr. Scott, I'm in Mr. Edward's motion.
Second.
Okay. The motion, any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to ask, we have a longstanding relationship with First Citizen Bank, has there been a problem with First Citizen?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
We got a problem. Some people have went off with a credit card, credit card doesn't work, they're a long way from home, they've been stuck, the neighbor, I think, last, had some issues there, the sheriff department had, but there have been some issues concerning that.
Just last week, our...
Excuse me, Mr. Castle, I've been in Columbia with it myself, and was trying to check in the room, and I couldn't, I couldn't get it to work.
Well, why, we have other banks in Dillon and Lakeview, why are we picking Anderson Brothers when they aren't even, or they may be here now.
I think they are in the lap.
But again, it's a brand new bank, and we have these other established banks that have been here.
We already got it, it was the First Bank, we got a credit card, everybody can pay it.
The fact you kind of spread it around a little bit, that everybody gives it to them.
Any more discussion?
And make it put on the record that the finance director went a couple weeks ago to the DMV, and he had around, or used his debit card, so the eight hundred dollars went into on that First Citizen card, due to maxed out, he came off of it.
Any more discussion? We got a motion to construct it, I'm afraid we're ready to roll it in.
I just don't understand what's going on with this.
Can I do that one more time?
No discussion.
Second.
All right, I'm going, what's your one?
Second. Okay, how many, who's there before?
Another game?
Yeah.
Excuse me, sir, Mr. Golds, breaking the law. What was your point, Mr. Golds?
Ah, it's going, this is, this is new to me, coming up now. I need this custody, I don't understand it all, I'm just neutral.
No one told me about credit cards in order.
Now, six, uh, eight, and so we have a bonus.
Motion on that.
We need to hear the motion, and the final.
Make a motion if you give the county employees the five hundred dollar bonus, because it always changes it. And we need to do anything for seven hundred that they give, or maybe five hundred. What you, we put both of them in our?
Let me just check a minute. Mister Young and, or Mister Gaddy, are we in position to do that, or how should we proceed forward it? Financially, you guys do finances, any questions?
Just here, the file pulling around, the seven.
Shouldn't that be included in the budget process?
That's what we're, that's what I'm asking, Mister Gaddy and Mister Young now, we're currently working on the budget, and I think it was understood that they did add two meals to prior budget, for this to be repeated every year. That's what I'm checking with Mister Gaddy. Well, we had that meeting, y'all were saying we could go ahead and give it to them now, but they said that...
We need to hold on, we're going to give them the five hundred.
No way either. They're in the budget. Here's what I'm having a problem with. Mister Young, are you here today? I'm having a problem with the administrator, and the administrator, I'm asking you a question, sir, are we in position to proceed forward with giving the employees their bonuses? And if so, sir, what, what are we in position to do right now?
Refer to county attorney, I said.
But, sir, by statute, you ought to present a budget, you should be able to tell us by statute, was it not, sir, that we can do this?
Present the budget.
So we, we can go ahead and do this, I'm asking you this question.
Yes, pass the budget, I mean, how we present the budget? Now, can they get the five hundred dollars, or they got to wait until we pass the budget?
I think it needs to wait for the budget. I think it'd be part of the budget process, it needs to be approved under the budget. Let's motion to table. Let's table it. We sat here, though, in a workshop, and y'all said it was fine to go ahead and do that.
Yeah, we all agreed on it.
Right now, we're up against legal counsel, he's all in here, and he's telling us to table, so let's motion to table, till we get it passed.
Oh, y'all county employees, it ain't my fault.
We can't go against legal counsel.
I don't think the issue at all, there isn't an issue about the county employees are going to get the same money.
They want it in August, like they normally do.
We passed a continuing resolution, unless I'm mistaken, which allows them to continue to spend the money. Now, I'm not a financial wheels, but if you, you still operating under last year's budget, and you're going to pass, okay, but anyhow, he's the counsel, I'm not, so I don't think why.
But they got the money last year on the budget.
Sir.
But they got the money last year on the budget, that is my understanding, so that is last year's budget. This would be this year's budget.
Well, August has thirty-one days, unless my calendar was wrong, and I believe it's just July, so if we can't pass the budget, August worked pretty bad.
Well, I agree with the budget, and the budget's going to have to be passed when it's sixty days, and when the emergency ordinance is passed.
Because you have to have a budget.
And I agree that we depend upon the county administrator to give us direction, and that's why I'm asking this gentleman that. Motion, let's table it, sir.
Okay, we have a motion to table, let's shake it, though. Okay, any more discussion? On the favor of table, raise your hand. Down on Bill, Schnew, and I for Bluewood, agreement, by and between Dillon County and South Carolina Department of Defense.
Motion that we pass, you still want I to do? Dillon County, South Carolina Department of Defense.
With the second argument, the motion.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? On the favor of the House. And the six, eight, recreation, before you...
Let me table it, let me table it.
Okay, in your pockets, you have, um, one from the annual picnic committee, um, at Men, and they're asking for donation for their picnic that they have every year.
Now, who's that?
Since you mentioned that, why they doing, about them bonuses, are we going to be able to give out these recreation requests since we ain't passed the budget?
Well, I think you do that every, every month.
But we've done give out, we have a two thousand dollar limit, everybody got two thousand dollars, and we give all of ours out last month, for the name of due time.
Well, in the, that's a good question, but in the, in the emergency ordinance, does state that things that were approved would be, would be able to tax to the new, the new budget?
How about the five hundred dollars?
I just, I think, you think, believes that employee, employees' salaries and bonuses should be part, should be part of the budget. I think the, the, a recreation request would be.
It was good.
Okay, back to the annual picnic committee, um, or they're having a picnic at St. Clair Crossroad Activity Field, August the nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first, and Janelle Briggs has asked, um, if y'all will give a donation. Then we have one from, um, Sean Bethay, he's, um, posting a Stop the Violence Street Ball event in Dillon, and hopes that you can help him by giving a fifty dollar or more donation toward the event.
What did that cost?
Stop Violence Street Ball event.
I thank you sponsors for the classroom.
Okay, and then we have, um, Thunderzone Martial Arts Academy, Wayne Green, um, is asking if y'all will help him. Uh, he's having an event, will be on office thirteenth at the City of Dillon Wellness Center, and, um, we ask that you could please help sponsor this event to help our kids to be able to compete here, and others event. It would help so much if you will sponsor a ring at this event. Sponsors will have their name and title posted out front around each ring, also announced throughout the day. The funds will help pay for kids' lunch and divisions that will be performing in.
Do a ring for them.
It doesn't say.
He told me, I was, I was asking, he said to sponsor, if you just want to sponsor a ring, it was two hundred dollars, but he was looking, you know, he didn't mind, anybody to give, that's what it costs.
Two hundred for a ring, it don't say on here?
Wayne told me personally, told me, he told me...
Two hundred for a ring, and you, that's what you're doing, huh?
I want to sponsor a ring, but I can give fifty dollars. And recently, I'm speaking up for this guy, you know, we've done a lot, we've done a lot of stuff in the community, and this is the only guy who really, I know pretty much have came by and appreciated the council as a whole, and then, and what we've done, I thought that was, I thought that was very good. I can't afford it. I gave him a hundred out of my...
You want to do a hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have one from Manning Baptist Church, um, they're sponsoring the Back to School Bash on August the thirteenth, and she is inviting you to share in this opportunity, make an impact on the youth, and contribute by donating book bags and school supplies. Um, with this contribution, you will help to build and help their community and promise a future for youth. The Back to School Bash will be held at Manning Baptist Church, three oh eight East Calhoun Street in Dillon.
I'll bring your check up there.
Okay, and then we have the O'Grohe Neighborhood Watch, supply success drive for brands one through twelve, um, buzzing, wanted to give a hundred dollars for this. Does anybody else want to give to the O'Grohe? This is O'Grohe Neighborhood Watch. And then we have, I think this is the last one, Ark of Safety House of Prayer, um, the youth department of Ark of Safety House of Prayer, um, is going into an integral place of worship for local residents with Sunday services, and, um, they are asking that you would give a donation to them, but Archie, you're giving a hundred dollars. Anybody else want to give to you, Ark of Safety?
We got a motion to approve, this is a recreation on the ground.
Don't move it.
The second. Any discussion? If I, favor of the House. Number seven, the financial court.
Mr. Chairman, uh, how are you? I may be a little out of order, but I think I misunderstood number five, but I would like to present something to the council here in reference to a ditch near my home.
You know who your council member is, man?
I spoke to, you have a council member here that came by my home, Mr. Robert, Robbie Coward, and I spoke to your, to Mr. Steve Moody, in reference to this, it's really a ravine that's, that runs parallel to my home.
Yeah, I think it would be fitting, Mr. Chair, this the first time we know, know about this as a whole, is to try to get you on the agenda at the next meeting, you talk with us, I think that would be fitting.
Okay, whatever the procedure is, I...
You'll get with the, after the meeting, you'll get with the county council and the chair, and I can set you up for the next meeting. Yes, thank you, ma'am.
I was told that it was presented to you guys.
This is my question here.
No? Okay, all right, that's why I'm here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You talked about road supervisor, Mr. Steve Moody.
I did, yes, and he told me that...
I know he says he would play on it, but is there anything else?
And I spoke to you, Mr. Coward.
Yeah, I went to your house and talked to you.
Right.
And I got Jamie Susan, county council, to get in touch with Steve, and he was supposed to meet with you, get back to county administration.
And he did. He did. Okay, I'm on your next agenda? Your next meeting? Okay.
Number seven, the financial court.
Okay, this, uh, last report, the end of June thirtieth, but it does put on the draft, because us, we had finalized this yet, because we were still waiting on some approved income to come in, so finalized a bit here. Typically, always pay our bills within thirty days, it must have popped, paid, it's been paid, but we're still waiting for the income to be approved. As of June thirtieth, we have two hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred and three dollars, more expenses than revenues, but I'm just looking through the state, that is approximately about a billion dollars, and we still have some other funds coming in. And one other account, probably not really the place for it, but one issue addressed with Charlie Brown, he's got a truck bound that needs a new motor in it, and that's about fifteen thousand five hundred, what I thought I'd take with this. Y'all want to proceed with getting that. There's the one, what it says, two thousand seven Mack truck. Yeah, the other one, I cut back, what we're getting.
Mr. Dick, we're on the financial court, I know we talked yesterday about we need a hundred thousand dollars to balance the budget for this year. Is that a generating report, or you sending something to the financial institution? Where'd you get it from? How'd you pull that in on a hundred thousand?
Um, that's based off the budget.
The budget.
Yeah, what, what, I think, anticipated it, revenues and anticipated...
And I know we got some stuff in there that might have been keyed in yet, might have been logged in. Did that help us, if all that was keyed in?
On far...
From the budget, I mean, like the two hundred ninety thousand dollars for employee wages.
That, that sort of gets keyed in.
But as of June the thirtieth, it hadn't been keyed in.
Are, are you talking about this report?
Yeah, yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, the other one is already just missed bid, might not have been, came out of that particular line item.
So do you feel like the report that we're getting is a hackler report, or, I mean, is it up to date when you get it? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, it, it should be accurate, should be. I, I feel comfortable, council pay...
I mean, if we give out the bonuses in August and November, and it hasn't been, that charged that line item, you know, maybe that would be accurate with it.
This year be a little bit difficult, we're going to go ahead and pull it out of the sound line item, right? What it's getting done.
How about where the line item and stuff had been deleted, and never went to another line item? The whole line item was deleted. You know, what might have happened to that?
Not right off of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. You don't find nothing, you don't want to get the, you had a motion on this engine?
Yeah, yeah, because Charlie's down, he's short. Truck's short, I know.
Well, I went down this morning and told Mister Brown that, uh, landfill, and we went over where the vehicle was at the shop, and he did assure me that if he got an engine put in, that it was fixing. Absolutely. He got two trucks, though, right? He had one down there, and he says he got one that's being prepared up in the Lee County area, they're up in Perry Island, and he, yeah, two thousand thirteen model, he says he had three trucks that's rolling, and if he got this engine, everything.
And this is a two thousand one seven?
Two thousand seven.
I had to do nineteen ninety-five.
I haven't gotten this period, boy. But the one I saw was the O seven, and he ensured me again, uh, that if he got that fixed, he'd be fine.
So, Castle Scott, what you saying, pretty well, we wouldn't even find that truck to fix that movie?
From what he, from what he tells me, that he could get by, uh, with the one up in Lee County that's being fixed, and if he got an engine in this O seven, he can assure me he'd be fine there.
I made that motion.
We made a motion, the, the second, but any more discussion? On the favor of replacing the engine, is that... We down with number eight, now, number eight, now, order of treatment. A second reading, in order by Dillon County Council to amend the official zoning of Dillon County, to resell a parcel of land on this tax amount number one ten dash double oh dash double oh, that's one oh nine, one ten parcel zero forty-nine, and one ten parcel zero seventy-two, from a general commercial district to a rural district.
Yeah, we, this is what we, last time, but Mr. Jones is here now, but it's dealing with the rezoning of the commercial, from general commercial to rural, rural district, so you could do a change in, in the, with the solar farm. That's what they recommended, that the planning commission's already met, they got a public period, they discussed it, and this is what they're recommending.
I'll make that motion.
Yes, sir.
Second, I agree.
Understood. On the favor of the House. The second reading, in order by Dillon County Council, meaning Dillon in order to add, add a number eighteen solar farm.
Wait, then there's solar farm, but you stay in, in the middle of that. Well, we got going on out there.
Well, I think, that, this one, this one basically deals with the changing, zoning ordinance, which is the zoning ordinance that actually deals with that. This is not, this doesn't deal with particular...
Well, that's not the one you're talking about.
Right, so that's, that's the actual ordinance, so the actual ordinance, meaning that we own, uh, Mr. Jones is recommending, we actually changed the ordinance that deals with that part of it.
We have a motion, uh, in the number thirteen, Dillon County Council, in order to innovation in the solar farm.
If we don't change it, they can build it.
Well, yeah, I mean, they, right now, they can go ahead and do it anyway, because they can, in some of the rural areas, they already got it, what Mr. Jones, I think, in the planning commission recommended was to basically set guidelines, it doesn't, it won't affect that one in a particular location, it'll affect all of them.
Mr. Jones, one more, let's pass it.
Yeah, it was, it was one, it was he who planned, which recommended that this be passed, this zoning, zoning designation for solar farm thing, changed to this language here.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Yes, sir. Any more discussion? On the favor of raising your right hand. Second reading, in order to approve, obtained by Dillon County Secretary on the county, certain special source revenue raised for company in Dillon County as part of the pineapple package. The company, the two, is provisioned with six and four, that's one, that's one seventy-five and total of the South Carolina nineteen seventy-six. As a means of authorizing execution delivery of an infrastructure finance agreement between the county and the company, providing for inclusion of the project in a joint county business or industrial projects, authorizing execution delivery of any kind of loan that the fair gave to the company, to effect the intent of this order and other matters related to the court order. Just a part of the motion.
Chairman, this is second reading on this, uh, the data law firm has done their, done their, done their work for that, and it's really doing that for a credit for the, for this part.
Mr. Jones, I know you can't give it all away, but Project Pineapple, please, bring me up to speed. Project Pineapple. Okay, like you said, all right, um, and written, I need to have some discussion with them, um, I think, Project, Project Pineapple, um, that has already made the deal on her all day. And Dylan was going, is going to get a new motel, set up in the Goldberry. My concern with Project Pineapple, which is a motel, is that we are talking about giving them a tax credit. I think somewhere in between a hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But at first, it sounds good, but as I've been studying research, I have issues with that, because I've talked with other motel that's across the bridge there, and nobody has gave them a tax credit. We give them a tax credit, I don't see where Dillon County is getting anything from them no more than, you know, they're not bringing any jobs, um, and they're putting that motel there for self-gratification. I never, and I think the story that they tried to sell, or the one that I heard was that this motel was going to provide thirty-five full-time jobs. Well, I question that. I don't know a motel in Dillon County that employs thirty-five people full-time. So I strongly disagree with giving them that tax credit. They've already purchased the land, and I think that that train, so to speak, has done left the station. I don't think they're going to be need, whether to give them the tax credit or not, just don't see how it's fair to give a hundred and seventy thousand dollar tax credit to taxpayers, all that would be revenue that would come to the county to someone who's just simply going to benefit on self-gratification.
You know, that property right now, the taxes, they're paying on it, I reckon, that, classified, that one, we get something like, somewhere between three and six hundred dollars a year on that truck. Now, if you give them a tax credit to come in, one year, we don't get any taxes, we lose out the six hundred, so we don't get any taxes, but the second year, we give a hundred and, what, thirty or forty thousand dollar taxes from being, from being owned, I think it's a very good investment, all the kind of money that'll be coming in.
But my point is.
I'll certainly do the same thing again.
Right, but my point is this, my point, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make up my point, so it's going to try to come to a point. The point that I'm trying to come to, it is evident, if they have already purchased the land, that they intend to come there anyhow, because they're there for commercialism. To give them something that they're going to do anyhow, is just giving away money to them. Whether we give them the tax credit or not, that motel has already decided that they're going to locate it thirty-eight and I ninety-five, and the reason that they're going to locate there because they're after self-gratification. They're in the business to make money. They're going to come anyhow, why give them a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, then they're going to come and give it to them all. That's my point.
They're going to ask them to come and have.
Why wouldn't come to you tell them the tax credit once they build, you tell them that?
If they already purchased the land, they intend to come, and I don't see them just.
Yeah, I'd like to say, once we voted the first from part of it, the chairman of the Dillon County School Board called me, Mr. Richard Shaver, the next day, and he said, Robbie, you realize what y'all had given away with Dillon County Schools? I said, what is that, Mr. Shaver? He told me it equaled about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, but they get sixty-five percent of the tax dollars.
So they're going to, Mr. Count, Mr. Shaver don't realize, you're not giving away any money yet, because that's not past third reading.
Well, he was saying that past the third reading, there would be a hundred and ten thousand.
And I'm trying to stop it before you get there.
That's what I'm saying, is, he said we would give, be giving away a hundred and ten thousand dollars of Dillon County Schools, but my motion is that we don't pass it.
I want to say this, um, that's the reason they probably come in because we're going to give them that tax break. We told them we were going to do it, and then if you go back on your word, Dillon County's going to look like whatever, they'll lie to you. But this is the thing, you might keep giving them, they lose a hundred and ten the first year, but they're getting a hundred and ten every year after that.
They ain't going to get all that.
Why won't they?
Well, he's probably a hundred and ten out of the hundred and seventy.
Okay, but they're getting money every year after that.
They're about sixty-five thousand dollars a year.
But they're going to get sixty-five thousand dollars a year for long as they're there. Now, and then, another thing, this hotel's supposed to be a little different than the ones we got up here, so they probably will employ a few more people than two people.
If that's the case, why don't we go out to Shoe and Barbecue, which is just right down the river, it's got forty-five jobs, and give him a hundred and seventy thousand dollar tax break? Why don't we do that? Why don't we do that?
That's what, that's kind of green on, Robbie.
Yeah, I do, sir, I do have some more discussion. Nothing is filed to the third reading, so whatever we said during the first reading was just going through formality, so to speak. We're trying to stop this before it gets to the third reading. There has not been another motel in Dillon County that we have given this to, and these people have already purchased the land before we can complete third reading, so it's evident that they're coming to deal.
I'm not saying to say that they didn't purchase the land, and that we had the first reading, and that's for.
Guarantee, so if they don't move, they won't move out.
Best, best, on the night that we did the first reading, they did the announcement, right? When did you get that announcement?
I got it from Tony McNeil when I left here.
Okay, that was already, it doesn't need a pretty much.
They, they're going to come to guard when you do it or not. I just don't see the sense in giving the tax money away, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, for somebody who comes to build a business in Dillon County just for their sake, just to make money, and they're not going to provide any jobs. It doesn't make sense. This is a low rate.
I can see doing it if that's what it took to make the deal, but that ain't going to make it on break, you know?
Can I say one more thing? I was told not to run it if they didn't pass it.
Tony, Tony said, when we were discussing the thing, that they're not going to cover Dillon, they're going to go to Florence, but when we get the tax.
Y'all went on Tony, but they ain't going to change my mind.
I think both are here to pass it, but I can't get.
It's a common sense thing.
We've had, we've had.
Right.
Did we have a motion to pass the second reading?
I'll make the motion.
It's not, it'll be the third reading.
The second reading.
The second.
The second reading.
And then I'll say, file to the third reading.
Okay, we've got a motion, the second, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Let the record show Mr. Chairman to all the opponents.
All opposed.
Thank you, sir.
Number down, D, second reading, all this to provide for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, this whole year budget. You're part of the motion.
Mr. Chairman, before we pass that, you go ahead and make the motion.
We have a motion, we have a motion, we have a discussion.
Yeah, okay, okay.
We've got a motion to pass the second reading on the budget.
I made a motion that we passed second reading.
Here, sir.
I'll play.
Any discussion?
Mr. Finance Director, on this motion, I know we got to borrow some money to get it, did you come up with anything on the two patrol cars for the sheriff's office?
Uh, probably a council decision, they want to add that too, but.
Add two cars? That'd be something we need to vote on, do it, add the two cars?
Well, I mean, if you, consistency of the council, you let me know. I didn't have more authority, not even have it in there, I don't.
I think we need to have another budget workshop, don't we, Clint? I think we need to go back to another budget workshop before we start putting all this stuff in. Does he where we asked?
Yes, we're, I mean, like you said, we're getting closer to not passing, we're going to be closer to not getting the budget done by the end of, end of August, I think, you know, you know something.
We already got two cars in the budget, we had two more, is that what we're doing?
They get a hundred thousand dollars a year. I think it takes care of like four cars, is that right, Liz?
Did he come, did he come to you, this was our time, we're about two more cars, nobody's mentioned, though.
Yeah, that was, well, we get enough, we get four, they use for, we can get about two out of the Jag around, I guess they're just getting one out of the Jag back in the shop.
Sheriff, can you explain to the council what me and you and Mr. Getty talked about the other thing, about we need to add the cars?
Well, what we're up against is we're trying to keep our forty cars or so running, and when we replace four a year, it takes ten years to roll a motor. We've got cars that got excessive mileage, I mean, real high mileage, repairs are getting unreal, and we were wondering if maybe, as a kind of a shot in the arm this year, we could get a, a one-time add, adding to our capital line item of fifty thousand dollars to be able to buy two more cars than we've been given, other than the four. We buy cars with that money, and we try to equip them with the federal drug fund money, and we also buy car occasionally out of there, but the cost of everything has gone up. We, we're trying to put, push buffers and cages on these cars, because when the deer hits one, five thousand dollars minimum, or wrecked, and you can put this equipment on there for about fifteen hundred dollars, and hopefully avoid some of those repairs. But at the same time, as many vehicles as we have out there now, and right now, I don't think there's a spare operating at the sheriff's office, we're using spares because we have other vehicles out, but we're not asking for it as a permanent increase with just one time to give us a couple extra cars this year, we're going to try to, obviously, I said earlier, buy one with the Jag money, that money years ago was as high as eighty thousand dollars, it's down to thirteen thousand dollars a year now, so you can't even buy one car with it, but we, we find the money to put with it out of our budget to get another car there, but we really, now, to keep our fleet going and to try to keep those repairs down, we need ten cars a year. We, there's no way to do it with the budget we got, and we're not asking for that now, we're just asking for a couple of extras this year to try to get us over the limit.
But you buy a lot of the cars out of drug money, is that right?
We do, we do, four or two.
Yes.
And that all depends on what your resources are there, sometimes that, you know, we get awarded some money as a result of the work that goes on with that, you may have a dry spell of two years and not have anything, and in the last four years, that has been real weak, and we've had them on the federal level returning money, we don't even get.
All the cars we have down there, they hold them shut.
Yes, sir, they, they are.
We can go to the field.
Yes, sir, and it's, it's time for me to have a sale, at least on the Crown Vic. Yeah, we've used parts and tried to pack them, because we don't make them anymore, and that's why we didn't want to get rid of any of them, we've tried to use them for parts. They don't bring anything on sale, and you go buy one fender at a retail store, it'll, it'll cost you more than one car to bring on sale, so we've tried to keep them for parts as long as we do.
The sheriff's sale is why it is, because it's just one time, heal these little cones that hit so.
It would, yeah, yeah, that would be a way to offset some of that money.
But Richard, on that bond, I know you cut some equipment out, but we're going to get, you ain't got it backed out of here.
No.
But we do have enough in that bond that we could borrow, just take fifty thousand dollars, add two cars.
Yeah, because we'll be taking charge of that company.
I'd like to make a motion that we add it in at this time to the bond.
You get it past the bond ownership, you can have it, you can get the first reading of the bond ownership.
Yeah, that's what you have to do.
I still think we need to, I mean, I'm not kicking the sheriff, I know they need equipment, everybody needs some, but I still think we need to go back to a budget workshop, and find out what we have and where we're at, because right now, none of us, to be honest, are sitting up here, actually know where we're at right now in this budget process.
You know we had, and we.
I understand, you do have a hundred.
They can be took out if you don't see what we've got the money.
Fifty-four thousand. Yeah. One job deal, a lot of, I'd love to have it permanently, but.
If we make a motion and we add it, and then we have a workshop, and then if we don't have the money in the bond, then we can take it out, I'd like to make a motion to add it.
The ordinance is not, prepared, it's not before you right now. Oh, if you're just giving the consensus.
I know Mr. Getty, he needs to talk to full council about adding, so I can really not bother with him, I'm going by the financial director.
Give a consensus of what the council lot says.
Okay, okay, consensus, okay. So if you're saying you want full council to perpetuate it, they want it.
Yeah. I'm doing it. I can't say right now, because I don't even know where we at financially, definitely, I can't, I wish I could help, sure, but I don't have the knowledge of the budget right now, or where we at financially to actually help.
Call for a budget, chairman. Call for a vote.
Am I mistaken something? Mr. Getty, aren't you telling, I mean, Mr., excuse me, attorney, I can't call, aren't you telling us as hard as you can, we need to work it out in the budget?
That's, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I may be wrong, guys, but we're trying to pass something, and we're supposed to be asking the budget, and I'm just a rookie up here now, but we need to put it in the budget and talk about it at the workshop. Sheriff can come to the workshop, present, like, and that's when we really need to do it, in my opinion, now.
But there is a motion in a second to approve the second reading of the budget.
Right.
Okay, one more thing, we have some discussion. On the budget that you put before us already, Mr. Getty, did you have any employees that you give a raise in that? Any of the county employees have you moved up into a raise?
None at all.
Ain't none of them in the new budget?
None, only bonuses.
So ain't no other, okay. That's all I have.
We're going to have a workshop, my call one, you know, right away, a full council workshop, and here for the head, we're just playing, I know it's a lot.
I'll be out of town next week, so.
Okay, and we wait, we.
I'll take a bottle.
Come back.
Yeah.
We're going to have to get.
Right.
We're going to have to prepare, you got with the city. I think we can work out that motion.
Thanks, sir. Let me have a motion in a second for the budget.
We have a motion.
You have a second.
Second reading. After discussion, we have a motion, we have a second reading of the budget, we have a discussion on the second reading of the budget. Everybody in favor of the second reading, raise your right hand. We have something else there, Paul, a Dillon County Board is owning the field, it's a full one there to go. Now, the trend seems to be doing the board's directors real important, Carmen, but she's on the board now, they say she's been doing the number one job this time for her to be real important.
I'll make a motion for real importance, Carmen.
Thanks.
Understood, in favor of raising your right hand.
I got a question. When did I know when my appointments back up? I was told that, uh, James McCray was up the red board. He's on that board. He's chairman of that board.
On trend? I'll now have to check the document, I'll let you know.
James, can you find out who all the council appointments is on there? Like each council has a report on there? Can you find out who represents each one?
Okay, we're down now to executive session, he can handle the development, uh, now, we have a motion going to executive session.
Chairman, can I make, can I make one comment
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can I make, can I, can I make one comment before we go into executive session? I, I think you want to executive session, but I'd like to go back to Mr. Hart, Mr. Scott's motion about bonuses, I think there may be a possible way to do it. I'd like to discuss when we come out of executive session, since it's not, if we could go back to that before we go into executive session.
Chair.
I'd like to go back to that motion. I'd like to go back to that motion when we get out of executive session.
You want to go back now?
I'd rather wait, just get, just get this executive session, matter of, we'll talk about it.
Give them the bonus. As a continued of the, uh, the deemed of the budget.
That being included in the budget.
It being included in the budget. Five hundred. Go ahead and give it them down now, because the budget be passed by the... Yeah.
See, a lot of budgets passed by these officers.
That was for the bond. I'm going to advise an attorney, I'm going to say to the budget's passed.
Attorney, you didn't change nothing.
I'm going on you, Mr. Attorney, I ain't going on what Clay said, like, what do you think?
I don't see the difference in what you just did, and I'm proving it through the budget.
So, you saying we should have done it?
It's done now.
Well, it may have, it may have.
I'm going to advise my legal advisor myself.
I don't recall finding them, but I got here with what the attorney just said. We don't take attorneys advice, we don't do it. You don't want to give them, they throw you money.
If we want to do it, but we want to do it.
We want attorney to tell us it's okay.
There you go, want to do it.
We want to do it.
I'll, I'll, I'll just say this, it may be okay to do it that way, I just think the best way to do it is to do it through the budget.
Mr. Attorney, I ain't going to be holding it, I'm going to listen to it.
Okay, we've had something, or you, you might be in this situation before, that we, we voted on, kind of blew control that time.
Budget, on the budget, just be, please, all the votes, just vote to suppress it, you know? The vote, you, nobody's voting you.
Yeah, we were voting on it.
All of them are voting.
Five voted. Six voted, six voted for it, and...
I go, we don't, we're sorry, pass now, that's somebody that tried to...
You can't do it the same way, no, can you, I don't think we do it the same way.
There's a procedure for doing it, I'd have to look to see what the, you may be right, it has to be done in different, like, back of the hand.
You won't be the first.
Can't do it the same way.
Who's second on that one, Dan?
Who said, well, I think people made a motion, yeah. I second, I second, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the vote, Leo, sure.
Your second, I like.